To call the meeting to order, please.
Are you okay doing this?
For all who care to join me, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You good? Roll call, okay. I'd like to read our board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important, and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay. So we'll move on to student representative reports.
RAS had a great opening of school. Students and staff were happy to be back and start forming new relationships. RAS was recently awarded a grant from the American Heart Association that was written by our PE teacher Nicole Adams in collaboration with colleagues Kate LaBelle and John Waller. The funds will help support students' physical activity by providing each classroom with equipment to get their bodies moving. Our open house is scheduled for this Thursday, September 12th, starting at 5:30 for grades three and five and 6:15 for grades four and six. We are also hosting a Title I meeting on September 12th at 6:00. We hope to see all families at these events. There will be ice cream. First week and a half at Northeast has been a wonderful return to school. From starting our days in morning circles to practicing routines and reviewing pause expectations, students and staff at Northeast are settling in nicely. Northeast Open House will be on Wednesday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Kindergarten at 6:00 p.m., first grade at 6:30 p.m., and second grade at 7:00 p.m. We look forward to having students and families in our school and partnering with Dolly Parton's library and the Boy Scouts. At Northwest Primary School, the students and staff are settling in. We have created a movement lab and are fully implementing the Ready Bodies Learning Minds framework to have children ready for learning. This has been a wonderful addition to our school and a shout out to Erin Cavallari, our occupational therapist, for supporting this initiative and working with our staff. Open House will be September 18th from 6:00 to 6:45. Prior to Open House, we will have a Title I meeting beginning at 5:45. During Open House, we will have the Rutland Free Library at PTO signup table and the Boy Scouts of America joining us. Please stop by and take a tour of the classroom, school, and see our wonderful playground.
Stafford is off to a busy start. The students are currently working on safety instruction and assessment in their programs so that they can begin to get to work in their program labs. On Friday, we held elections for three student representatives on our regional advisory board. We are happy to announce the following students will serve as the student representatives for the 24-25 school year. Taylor Murphy from Mill River in Public Safety, Lila Okendo from Rowland High School in Digital Arts, and Alyssa Raymond from Otter Valley in Human Services. Our back-to-school night will be held on Thursday, September 19th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. in the RHS Theater. After a welcome, students and families will head to their program areas and conclude the evening with a barbecue in the cafeteria. On Friday, September 20th, we will have our annual STC Fun Day during D Block. Students and staff will have the opportunity to play old-fashioned molly games, enjoy ice cream, and get to know one another in a relaxed setting. Please feel free to join us for either event. Rowland Middle School hosted a lake day on Friday. All 300 RMS community members spent the day getting to know each other and team-building at Lake St. Catherine. We have received hundreds of clothing donations from the community for our school swap and switch store. Once this is up and running, our students will have access to clothes throughout the year. Advisories are in full swing. We are looking for community partners to pair with our eighth-grade advisors to promote positive community engagement. If you are interested in finding out more, send us an email. All of our students have taken our benchmark assessments in ELA and math. We are excited to monitor this data and our students' growth. For Rutland High School, the school year is off to a great start. We welcomed approximately 200 new freshmen to their first day of high school. During their orientation day, they met in advisories, followed their schedules to meet their teachers, and worked in small groups of three to complete an RHS scavenger hunt. All of the students returned on Thursday, September 29th, and classes are off and running. We hosted each class in separate assemblies in which we welcomed students back and reviewed expectations, including grading, electronic devices, and attendance. Rowland High School was pleased to welcome families at our annual Open House night. Students and families met briefly in the theater to learn about some of the unique opportunities for students, such as capstone, place internships, and global studies and student endorsements. They then followed an abbreviated schedule to meet each of their child's teachers and to learn more about each course.
Thank you. Moving on to central office reports, we have Superintendent Olson.
Thank you. I'll be pretty brief. I wanted to let the board know and the community know that we took a field trip the other day. Took a field trip last week. We had a big bus. We all got in a bus, and we took a visit. We had a number of staff members who went to GE Aeronautics Aviation to take a tour of the plant. And we were doing this with the purpose of trying to understand, we're looking at our portrait of a graduate, and we're saying, you know, this is what we want to be working towards in schools. We want to make sure we're aligned with what's really happening, what's being expected by the working world and the community. So we took a tour of the plant. We were able to see how, you know, all those engine parts are processed. It was absolutely fascinating. I've never seen such a process before, starting basically from scratch, you know, blobs of metal and turning it into, you know, the little pieces of an engine turbine. And as we were walking around, and we got to speak with a lot of the folks that were there, we were pretty clear that we could see a lot of those portrait attributes that were being practiced. And I'm looking at a couple right now, adaptability for sure. They talked about collaboration and communication as being really important for their employees, critical thinking, of course, and integrity, I think. There we go, yeah. Integrity was definitely part of what was there. So we had an opportunity to see the plant, talk with a lot of folks who were working in the plant, and then also then have a conversation with some of the leadership afterwards. And, you know, our question was, we're trying to teach this in schools. Is this what you're expecting, or what are we missing, and what do we need to aim for? But it was pretty well-aligned, I thought. I think the things that we're shooting for there are the things that they're expecting of their employees. So that was a good opportunity for us to see, I think, the portrait of a graduate in the real-world setting. So I think we're on the right path. And I wanted to thank the folks at GE for allowing us in and giving, they gave us a lot of time. A lot of folks, I think we spoke to, I don't know, maybe 30 people altogether or more over a course of a couple hours. So they gave us a lot of time to help us learn a little bit more. We made good connections with them, and I think it will, our job now is to make sure we see the relevance of what's happening out there and how it applies to schools. We need to make sure our students see the relevance as well. And so we're going to do this one more time. We're going to do, take a visit to the hospital and kind of do the same thing. See what people are, what work skills are needed in that setting from the range of different jobs that are there, and try to make sure that we are well-aligned with what we're teaching in schools. So that's really all I wanted to report. We have a lot of other stuff to talk about tonight, so I kept it short.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Can I just say one more thing?
Of course.
Sorry, after I consider this stuff. I did want to thank GE Marty Marr, who is one of the leaders over there, who is also a Rutland High graduate. And Marty put it all together for us and, you know, I think spent a lot of his time getting ready for us to come visit. So I wanted to thank Marty for allowing us in.
Thank you. Ted, you are up. The Budget Planning Timeline Report.
Well, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to spend a little time with you tonight. I'm going to give you a brief overview of our planning and timeline for the upcoming Annual 26 Project. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to review some slides that were discussed with the Finance Committee last week. If I can get this to open up. Oh. Right there? There we go. I see. Thank you. Appreciate that, Bill. His hand signals are very, very helpful. I appreciate that. All right. So, well, that's interesting. Do you see on your, never mind, I think I can handle this right. All right. So let's go ahead. Well, there we go. So the important point about the next couple of charts is that the school board is going to have four opportunities, four formally-scheduled opportunities to have input on the development of the budget. And if we run this process the way it's intended, all interested parties and constituents will have ample opportunity to ask questions, provide their guidance. We don't want any surprises. So, for example, at your next meeting on October 8th, we'll provide the board with an update on some of our key assumptions, our planning assumptions for '26, and perhaps a rough initial outlook. Then during the month of October, we're going to be gathering further input from administrative leaders from around the district, including expense and grant revenue estimates that we'll consolidate and pull together for your next meeting on November 12th, when we'll give you an updated and preliminary budget outlook. That will include some detail developed with Glenn Scott in terms of a maintenance and capital plan for '26 and potentially beyond. Okay? Then going forward to your meeting on December 10th, our intent would be to have refined the forecast during the month of November so as to basically be able to give you a fairly tight budget proposal. The idea with that is if we've done our job properly, we should be pretty close. But we want to offer the board and the other constituents several additional weeks to think further about what that's looking like, especially in the context of a potentially challenging budget year. Then we would come back in early January with any revisions, incorporating any guidance that the Finance Committee or others wish to give us, and then ask the board to vote on both a budget recommendation and ballot language. That's when a lot of additional work would begin because a key part of the budget development and passage is, of course, a community outreach and communication plan. We've been very fortunate, working with many members of the administration, including Patricia's IT team, to have a pretty robust social media campaign. We've actively used print media as usual, working with the Rutland Herald. Kristy Colludi has helped coordinate with us segments for Peg TV, which we'd like to do again. And of course, a variety of meetings with community groups has become available. And we've talked with groups like the Rotary Club, Rutland Young Professionals. The idea is to be with people who are involved and truly interested in community affairs and whom we can share some of these messages with. We'll, of course, develop some Q&amp;A reference materials, standardizing hopefully a fairly clear and straightforward message so that you, when you as board members are meeting those you represent in the community, you know, you'll be able to provide hopefully some clear and understandable messaging for those folks. And then, of course, we always conduct a phone campaign the night before. Volunteers step up to help us call voters to remind them to please go out and vote. We don't, you know, we don't ask that they vote one way or the other. We just ask that they get out and vote. And then, of course, Town Meeting Day is on the Fourth of March. Any questions about that timeline and basic plan? It's very similar, you know, to what we've done in past years. The difference this year is we hope to do it even better. I want to highlight for you a couple of the budgeting principles that we typically use. And the point here is that we have a number of somewhat competing objectives, so we try and optimize among those. So, of course, the first always is maintaining excellence in our educational program for our students, consistent with our vision and our strategic plan deliverables. Secondly, of course, oops, okay, so that didn't work unfortunately because, let me try this again. There we go. Sorry about that. I didn't click finely enough, so I'll be a little bit more careful. We always want to maintain a cost structure that is very respectful and considerate of our taxpayers and importantly, is sustainable, not just for the current year but in future years because decisions that we make in any one year typically carry forward. And so we try and be very mindful of the cost structure. We want to ensure that we offer competitive compensation. That's actually a district policy to attempt to retain, motivate current employees, and to attract the very best available recruits. We selectively apply technology where that can help to enhance the classroom educational experience, of course, increase staff productivity, and help us to control costs. And then finally, working closely with the folks in facilities to make sure that we maintain a safe and healthy learning environment for everyone. And that includes timely maintenance to minimize our total lifecycle costs. So there's obviously a fine balance between those kinds of objectives. And as we have mentioned to others who have asked, there's no unique answer. There's no one obvious solution. And part of our job is to facilitate by providing you information and analysis, your decision process to determine, you know, how to best optimize among those competing objectives in the community. So hopefully, again, with several reviews, you'll have an opportunity to do that. I think we've done it fairly well, which has helped us to pass our budgets on the first go-around the last few years, and we hope to keep it that way. This chart shows you our full-time positions from fiscal '21, when we had 522, into the budgets for '22 and the budget for '23, when we managed our staffing down by utilizing natural attrition. When people would retire or resign, we didn't necessarily fill all of those positions and occasionally rebalanced, trying, of course, to minimize situations where we needed to ask somebody to leave in order to manage our cost structure. We were fortunate, in this current budget year of '25, to be able to maintain stable staffing at about 495 FTEs. And that's important because, as you can see, employee compensation typically represents about 80% of our total cost. So that was a big accomplishment. We hope to work closely with the administration to start talking this month about how many FTEs we might require across the district in order to deliver on the educational programming that we'd like to for the next year. So key messages, I've got four of them for you. The first is, we expect another very tight budget for '26. It's not getting any easier. We want to continue to focus, as we've done in the past, on minimizing the funds that we need to request from the State of Vermont's Education Fund and maximizing our use of available federal grants. And a reason for that, as some of you who have been on the board for a while would know, is that any expenditures that we fund with a federal grant has no impact on local taxes. When we go through all the discussions and the calculations, the cost that's relevant for calculating the local homestead property tax rate is not the total expenditures. It's the expenditures that are funded by the State of Vermont. We'll be talking a little bit more about that. But, so it's not just a matter of managing your costs. It's also a matter of managing your revenues and where you're getting those from. Factors that drove this current year's budget are likely to be very similar and in play for the coming budget year, if not maybe more so. We had a lot of legislative uncertainty, as you know, in the past year. That doesn't seem to become any less in the coming year. As a matter of fact, some of you may have read about the fact that the yield bill that was passed in the spring established a new commission that is going to be examining the future of education in Vermont. That commission has a very wide scope. And frankly, it could be looking into many, many important aspects of the educational delivery system and programming. We're going to want to watch those developments very carefully because they could have significant implications, not only for the quality of education but the cost in Vermont. Unfortunately, medical plan costs are expected to increase again into double digits. That would be the fourth out of the last five years in which those premium costs have increased by more than 10%. However, there is a little bit of good news on the inflation front in the sense that other and overall inflation rates continue to trend down. The most recent release from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics indicates that for the 12 months ending in July, inflation actually dropped to 2.9%. And I'll show you a trend chart on that in just a moment. So that will at least help with, you know, some areas of our costs going forward. A big one that's still out there for us to be cognizant of is labor negotiations with the teachers, which, you know, have not been settled and are still going on. We are fortunate to have reached favorable and, we believe, very fair labor agreements with three of the four groups that represent our employees. But of course, the teachers' union is the largest one. So we're looking forward to hopefully a mutually agreeable resolution of that contract renewal in the coming months. And finally, as I'm going to show you in a moment, one message is that the common level of appraisal factor, which is one of the several factors that goes into determining your annual homestead tax rate, that was a big driver of the increase in our fiscal '25 homestead tax rate, which increased a little more than 6% up to $1.67. I'll show you a chart in a moment that shows you that that's the highest it's been for many, many years, possibly forever, but my history doesn't go back more than about 10 years. And so what that says is not only did we, you know, we did our best to try and keep and manage that tax rate, but it was a 6% impact on those taxpayers who don't qualify for the income credits. And having gone through a 6% increase one year and now being at the highest tax rate that we've been for quite some time, that naturally is going to put some limitation on what might be able to happen and be sustainable in terms of the tax rate going forward. So while I want to be clear that we do not budget to a tax rate, we budget to educational needs, naturally, we need to be cognizant and sensitive to the local impacts. So I promised you a chart or two on inflation. This shows a relatively good trend. I mean, the blue is what's called the All Items Consumer Price Index. The green excludes food and fuel. That's called the core. Inflation overall rose at 2.9%, as I mentioned, through July 2024, for the 12 months ending then, which, as you can see from the charts, one of the lower levels that we've had in quite some time. In fact, the core price has increased by 3.2%, so a little bit higher. But its rate had dropped to the lowest for that metric since April of 2021. So, you know, we can be cautiously optimistic that it does seem that, you know, the prolonged period of high Fed interest rates and other factors, including probably a lot of the COVID-spending fiscal stimulus, which was measured in the trillions of dollars, now seems to be working through the system, and the economy does seem to be slowing down a little bit. This shows you another couple of graphs that suggest an economic slowdown. The graph on the left shows you the month-to-month change in non-farm payrolls. Okay, so it's excluding farms. And you can see the increase in payroll jobs in the month of July was 142,000. What's really interesting is not only the downtrend, but many of these numbers, once issued, have been getting revised downward, meaning that the trend may be even softer than it looks like. For example, in June, that number was revised downward by 61,000 from an initial report of 179, down to 118. That's a big downward revision. Yes, Karen?
I'm sorry. Can you go back to page seven? And you have down in the corner for the Northeast. Is this showing that the CPI was higher in New England and?
So what Karen's referring to is an inset that I don't have on this particular chart. Let me, so, because I've changed the chart to make it a little bit more simple. But Karen, what you're referring to is I had put into an earlier version of the charts data from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics that's for the Consumer Price Index. And what that shows is, in addition to national data, naturally, the government breaks things down into regions and areas. So what you're seeing in the lower-right inset there is there's a Northeast region. And so you can see the 12-month change in CPI there, which was 3.6% if I'm recalling correctly.
Yes, correct.
And then below that, you see the CPI metrics for two areas within the region of the New England and the Middle Atlantic, at 3.5% and 3.7% respectively. So my point there was to say that I'm showing you some national statistics, but for those who were on the Finance Committee or who attended that meeting where I shared those details, you always have to be cognizant. If I say, or anybody says, oh, this is what the Consumer Price Index is doing, you need to ask, which one?
Well, exactly. That's my point, is that for New England, we are much higher than the national, or higher, I should say.
Typically, the, you know, I want to be really careful with what you just said because we always have to distinguish between the rate of inflation, which is the rate of increase, and the cost index, which is the, which reflects the level of prices. So it's fair to say that historically and generally, the cost index and the level of prices, like housing costs, yes, is typically higher in the New England and the Middle Atlantic states than it would be, say, in the middle of the country. California is also higher. It's a little bit, it's not, there's not quite such a clear pattern in terms of the inflation or the rate of inflation. That can vary depending upon a number of things. So I'd be careful not to generalize there. But, yeah, it's easy, and it's easy, a lot of people passing over quickly will say, okay, well, here's the rate of inflation. I've got a different one than you do. But we all ask, well, are we looking nationally? Are we looking locally? And the reason I put that in there was to say that what these statistics do suggest is whether you're looking nationally or now regionally for what's relevant to us, 3% plus or minus now seems to be the range that these rates are settling into. And that's a good sign. A lot of people are thinking that that trend's going to continue downward nationally and globally.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Sorry, I went past that too quickly. Okay. So what I was showing you here is that there are indications that things are really slowing down even more than the reported numbers are suggesting because the reported numbers come out. I wouldn't be at all surprised if next month we find out that that 142,000 gets revised downward because over the past year, some of you might have seen, if you were looking at March 23 to March 24, recently, the government said, oops, we over-reported jobs by 818,000 over those 12 months. So there was a massive downward revision, and that bias seems to continue. And on the other hand, unemployment seems to be going up a bit. By historical standards, 4% is not unreasonable, but I think the trend's pretty clear in terms of what's happening in the market. So I'm envisioning that this, if these signs of slowdown occur, that will hopefully support slower inflation rates in the coming year, which will help our budget. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. Looking for all the help we can find. I was talking about tax rates a little while ago. And there you can see the $1.67 at the right-hand side of the chart for fiscal '25, the year we're in. You know, it was close to that in fiscal '22. It came down a little bit for a number of factors I won't bore you with. You know, the trend is up, but I'm a little concerned now that we're at the upper end of that range. And so we need to keep that in mind as we, you know, as we move forward. So this next chart shows you a little bit of a different view of that. It's the same blue bars that you looked at a moment ago, but then it makes an assumption. If you look at the box at the lower part of the chart, starting in fiscal '18, it shows you what the annual common level of appraisal has been year by year. I mean, you can see that in '18, it was about 98.5%. Stayed relatively flat for a few years to 99% in fiscal '20, and then started to decline. years to 99% in fiscal '20, and then started to decline, reaching about 75% for this current fiscal year. And without getting into the details of the mechanics, the point here is, is that this common level of appraisal is a factor that's established by the state. It has its metrics. It's an estimate, like a lot of these factors are. It's impacted by whether you've had your property in a city reappraised recently, or in the case of, like, Rutland City, it's been since 2006. So this factor is attempting to adjust to market rates, market rates, the tax appraisals. And without getting into any more detail than that, here's an interesting point. This drives our homestead tax rate. The 74.9% CLA was a significant factor in that dollar 67 for this year. However, that orange line is showing you what our tax rates would have been if the CLA had stayed the same at 98.5% across these several years and if nothing else had changed. So if all but the CLA had stayed the same, we would have had a tax rate this year of $1.27 instead of $1.67. So the point there is to show you just how powerful that CLA, which is beyond our control, is. For the current year versus that dollar 67, if the CLA had stayed at last year's amount of 82.9, 83%, then instead of $1.67, our tax rate would have been $1.51. So the CLA, year to year, was worth a 16-cent increase by itself. Again, outside of our control. What isn't in our control is we're attempting to manage our costs as best we can, do other things, but we are subject to some of these important variables. I don't anticipate that we're gonna get any relief from the CLA in the coming year, although part of the yield bill this past spring is that the state is going to change the way it applies the CLA, and it's going to do a recalibration of the numbers. They've emphasized it shouldn't change the results, but it's gonna make the numbers look different. I don't know why they're doing that. A skeptic might suggest they're trying to take pressure off of how bad it looks that the CLA is impacting these things without changing the bottom line, but that's sheer speculation on my part. In the spirit of the fact that we're all starting the new school year, I would like to give you a pop quiz. And some of you know the answers to the pop quiz because you attended last week's meeting, but for those of you who are interested, I'd like to ask, let's see how we do. What was the average cost per student? And when I say per student, I mean, using the AOE's metric of long-term weighted average daily membership in fiscal '25 was, is it $34,900? Is it $13,300? Is it $12,800? Is it $12,400? Or perhaps, is it $11,300? Does anybody wanna take a guess? Anybody wanna take a guess?
B. I know the answer.
You know the answer. Okay, let's go with the answer. What's the answer?
If I remember correctly, it's $12,801.
Well, let's see. Oops.
Oh, it's D.
Yes.
Yes. That's the average cost. I didn't get my link right. I apologize. Now, that first one, that first one is a no because that's a number that some of our friends at the Board of Aldermen and Older Women came up with last year when they decided, let's take the total cost of $64 million and let's divide by the classroom headcount of about 1,825, and let's look at the fact that, oh, my goodness, they're spending $35,000 per student. Isn't that outrageous? No wonder our tax rates are so high. Well, that has nothing to do with tax rates. I've tried to tell them that. I'm gonna try and shame them into it in the coming year because all that, that includes the federal spending, which, as we know, has no impact on local tax rates. Now, it turns out that B is actually correct for the state of Vermont. Okay, so that is the average this year, and so you can see that our average of $12,400 is below the state average. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. It's just different. We have different needs. The state looks different. But it's good to know that we're not substantially above, otherwise, we'd need to explain it. $12,800 is wrong because that was our city's average last year. So you can see from comparing C and D that we were able to manage our costs per student according to the AOE's metrics of students, lower. And I thought E was really interesting because that is the actual average cost in Slate Valley, one of our neighbors. And so while we can be glad that our cost went down, look at that, at $11,300 per student, again, according to the standard AOE metrics, their costs were even lower than ours, and yet their budget failed four times before they passed it on the fifth time in late June, I think it was. But at any rate, it just goes to prove that having one of the lower average costs per student is no guarantee that the budget is going to pass. There are a lot of other elements. As a matter of fact, for those of you who have friends or colleagues in Barry, you might know that they are hoping on September 17th to finally pass their budget for this year. So it was a rough year, and it's probably gonna be another rough year coming forward. But as always, and I try and optimistically remind people, the solution is out there. We just have to find it. And if we work together and we're reasonable in how we go about doing this, I think we'll be successful once again. So let me ask, do you have any questions or do you wanna provide any any further comments at this point? Okay, well, I greatly appreciate your time and attention. This was the easy part. Congratulations on the quiz, and I look forward to working with you during the fall to come up with a budget that satisfies everybody's needs. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, recovery update.
So I'm gonna fill in for Glenn Scott. Glenn couldn't be here tonight, and Bianca's going to join me, and we're gonna have, I don't know if we're gonna measure up to what Glenn's comedy routine would have been. This could be kinda boring. But we wanna give a, we're coming to the end of ESAR, and so we, I think in June, we gave kind of a summary of this is where we're spending the money. But we're coming to the end right now in September. And we still, we actually have a few more months to go to do some of the work. But we wanted to make sure you understood where we're where we are at and see some of the work that was done. So I'll do the, some of the facilities changes, and Bianca's gonna talk about some of the programmatic changes. And so, all right, here we go, Bianca. Ready? Click. There it is. So we were able to spend, through the grant, money that allowed us to create engaging work, learning spaces. And as we talked about before, they could be outside, and that could fit with under the guidelines of making sure that if we had a pandemic in the future, we'd have spaces for kids to be able to learn. So we built a series of these outdoor classrooms around the district. This is the one at Allen Street. It's beautifully done. We've got a beautiful stone wall back there with a lot of plantings as well, and it fits right into the campus. It looks, it looks really nice. So that's one, one part of what happened at Allen Street. We also did some work in with the HVAC systems. This is Glenn's before picture of what the air handler, air handler looked like in the, for the gymnasium. And there's the after with the, this new, beautiful new machine. Glenn's very excited about the shiny, shininess of it. This before it all gets connected and set up, but that's, that's the difference between before and after. I think the before was built decades ago, and so that was a good change for us. We were able to use this money in a lot of different ways that helped improve the facilities. Also, at Allen Street, we're putting a new air handler on the top that will feed into the classrooms. So we're gonna have a little, make a little space between those solar panels there, and that'll be done sometime this month. Another outdoor classroom and a little bit of a playground area for Pier Point. It's a nice space. All of that is new, that hillside, the steps, the accessible walkway going down there is all new for the kids at Pier Point. And then this is the Northeast outdoor classroom behind the school. It's really nice. And in the intermediate E-school. Sorry about that. We, we did this all around the district. We were able to change our old projection systems into into smart TVs, and we finished up at RIS this year or the summer. And that was a collaboration between the facility, our maintenance folks and our IT guys. That was a lot of work. We had to change the structure a little bit to make sure those, those would stay up safely. But every classroom has one now, and that's a good, good advantage for for instruction. At the intermediate school, we had these heat recovery units that were, that are going to be replaced. This is in September and October. There are 14 of them. They deal with heating, filtering the air, and bringing fresh air into the system. This is part of our energy performance contract from 2015, and they just needed to be updated. So we were able to use the money to update those, renew them and service them. And that red one on the bottom left, that's over the library, that that will be replaced. So better air at RIS. Middle school, this is Glenn said, this is his pride and joy. They took about three years to map this out and get it to, get it to look right, but we've got that nice little hillside behind the middle school that overlooks to the west. And this is the before, and this is the after. We were able to work with Russell Construction, MBF Architects, and M. M. Kestring Engineering to create this, really, it doesn't, I don't know if you can judge the size of it. It's a pretty good space that could at least hold two classes' worth of kids. And with these big umbrellas that give a little bit of shade, and then the plantings around the edge that as they, as we go on in the years, that will provide more shade. But it's a really nice patio area that we can have for outdoor classrooms and other events.
And furniture is coming. It's customized, so it's, hmm, it takes a little while, but it is on the way.
So they can't walk away?
Correct.
Exactly. At the middle school maker space and in the high school creative structure building, we have more air filtration so that we have cleaner air in those spaces. And then next, we did an air handler over the cafeteria. That had been there for quite a while, as you can see. That's the before, and then the after is next. That's the after, much more efficient. So that'll give, you know, better heating, better cooling in those spaces and better air. And Mountain Air HVAC did that work. And then at Stafford, we had a really fancy fume and dust collection system that got installed for the welding area. And it takes, takes the air out, runs it through a filtration system, and then any particles are, are collected at the bottom, that bottom canister. It's a, it's a pretty good device to help keep that space nice and clean air-wise. We're also putting some new air handlers on top of Stafford. That'll be an upgrade, and we're going to upgrade the air handler over the dollhouse in the kitchen area. And then we also redid the entire HVAC building control system. This is a screenshot of what that computer system looks like on the right. All of those is, computers get older, as your, as your devices get older, they all have to be upgraded. So all of that work was done so that we can, you know, better monitor the temperatures inside the classroom and the air. We also were able to do this, it hadn't been done before, for Stafford's forestry building and for PPLC to have that space brought into the system. And then another safety piece, this is one of our goals for our safety work in the, in the building. We've created wayfinding signs all throughout the district so you come into any building, you can find your way around. It's good for the public, but it's also good for, you know, for safety personnel if they had to come into the building quickly and find their way around. So it guides people through the building. We're getting all those signs back, and then we'll solve them over the course of this year. Another slide of that for at RIS. And so this is the, this slide just shows you that the, the last pieces of our work. This is all the HVAC work. We decided that we had, did have more money left, so we added some more, more pieces at the bottom. So Glenn has this color-coded map to show where, if we're green, we're complete, if we're yellow, we're almost there, and if we're, on this screen, it was kind of orangish-brown, we were, that's, we're getting there, but we're not quite done yet. Those, some of those were, were new additions. And Glenn actually sent us this picture. That's a week later. He's got even more yellow, a lot more yellow, only one line of orange and a little bit more green. So they're almost there. They've been working hard over the past month to try to meet deadlines. Just about, just about finished with ESAR, as far as buildings go.
So there are a few other things covered by ESAR that I'll just quickly update the board on. And these pools of remaining money are significantly less than the HVAC and the maintenance work. But the great thing is that we were able to take the remaining pools of money and cover quite a few expenses that I'll talk about with our summer work. We were able to roll those into ESAR funds so that we could use up as much of that money as possible and then be able to, like, some of the summer work was maybe allocated for some other federal grants that we'll be able to amend and use for other things. So really, to be able to maximize the funds that we had available. So we have a line for needs-based professional development with our ESAR grants, and so we used those funds for a lot of the in-service professional development for staff, which included assessment work, restorative practices work, universal design for learning. We had teachers engage in courses that were taught through Castleton University. We sent a large team to the Innovative Schools Conference, and then we had several other individual and group requests that had come in that we were able to finish out most of those professional development funds. And then we had some funds related to academics. So if you recall, the last few years, we had Lorraine Bargman Metz and Abby Brodowski really working on updating our curricular work. And so a good amount of that work was done, but there were still some teams continuing to work on those projects over the summer. So we used some of those remaining funds to cover summer tutoring, school improvement work that occurred, updated curricular supplies to align with those new unit development and curricular review, and then also some technology purchases for student access.
Bianca, can I ask you a question about the needs-based professional development?
Sure.
You notice that Northwest and RIS weren't on there as ones that were targeted with that money?
Well, it really depended on the specific PD if it fell. So it's not that they weren't engaged in professional development. We, the funding source just wasn't connected to ESAR. A lot of Northwest's work was through some other improvement money that they specifically had earmarked. So some of these proposals were, we were maybe gonna cover with other funds, and then at the last minute, we had these ESAR funds available, and the professional development fell in line with what the funds were allocated for. So like I said, we tried to maximize them. So in some cases, we said, okay, let's pay for that of the ESAR funds and then maybe have funds for other things in the future.
Thank you for explaining that.
Sherwin? A question about, is this a reimbursement model? Or is there a pool of funds where we received, and then if we haven't spent them, we have to return them?
I believe it's reimbursement. Ted, do you know?
I didn't hear the question.
If it's reimbursement or returning a fund if you don't use them?
For ESAR?
Yes.
Use them or lose them?
Use them or lose them, but I do think.
Yeah, so were we, so were we submitting expenses and we were reimbursed to cover our expenses? Or were we given a pool of money upfront, and then if we don't spend it, we have to return it?
We spend the grant money upfront, and then we apply for grant reimbursement typically within the quarter.
Yep. Did you hear that?
Not really.
Okay, so we, we spend the money upfront, and then we apply for reimbursement within the quarter typically.
After the, right. Okay, so we're not sitting on a pool of money.
So, yeah, and the, the difficult thing is, originally, these funds were supposed to end on June 30th, before I began my position. And then that deadline got extended a little bit. So we had, there were 10 days from when I came into my role for. So we had, there were 10 days from when I came into my role for us to be able to make an amendment to certain Essar funds that were still remaining. There were others that we couldn't amend because they're three years old or whatever it might be. So we did do some slight amendments. We took a look at what was remaining in maybe some of the positions that ended when the school year ended and said, okay, can we make small amendments to these much smaller pools of money to allow us a little more flexibility? For example, we had a significant amount of money in curricular supplies for math. And we felt like we had purchased what we really could for math, but we had another investment that was more open-ended for all curricular areas. So we did an amendment and were approved to shift those money so that we had a little more flexibility with how we could spend them to align to the curricular work that we had done over the course of the last few years. So we're really trying to spend as much as we can within the investments that they're allocated for. And sometimes, you know, we might anticipate spending a little bit more than in reality we can because, like, X number of hours for summer tutoring. But then, you know, we have less student need or somebody's absent, and so we're not going to spend quite as much, and it's too late to amend those funds. So we're really trying to come as close as we can to spend.
I would just like to applaud the administration and the buildings and grounds people and all of the principals and staff on what an outstanding job on managing the Essar money and going as far as we were able to. I think every penny was spent very wisely. I think every student will benefit in some way or another and probably already has. But it just makes me very proud of our school system and how well this has been managed.
Here, here.
Thank you.
All right, so speaking of summer improvement work, so every year, we update the board on the work that our staff does over the summer. In most cases, this work is beyond their contracted hours. So if there are teachers coming into work in the summer, they're being compensated for that work through school improvement. Just to kind of reiterate what I said at the end of the last presentation, we, when we look to grant proposals for schools saying, I really think this is something we need to work on this summer, oftentimes, we're writing that into our federal grant. We had some flexibility because of our Essar funds to be able to use some of those funds to fund projects, to continue that work from the school year, maybe more so than we would in other years. So I'll talk a little bit about that. This summer, we focused on four main areas. This is not an exhaustive list, so there are lots of other things as well, little things happening here and there. But the four main areas that we focused our summer work on included curriculum, social emotional learning, student and family engagement, and professional development. So some of the highlights of the curriculum work, we had some English language arts curriculum and literacy work that was done, which mainly included curricular alignment and including instructional design and assessment work. So that was done with grade-level teams and teacher leaders, as well as the literacy coach leading that work with teams. And again, that was really a continuation of some of that curricular work we've been doing over the course of the last few years. Okay, let's take some additional time in the summer to have our teams work to continue that and get us ready for the school year. We also had reading and writing unit design that occurred cross-disciplinary within social studies and English, language arts at the middle school. We had math alignment work and instructional design that was done with our K-2 teams and teacher leaders really leading that work. And then math intervention instructional design also at the K-2 level. For social emotional learning, the intermediate school had a large team that worked on their positive behavioral interventions and support planning and planning for implementation for the school year. And then at the high school, they actually had some work done on their advisory program. So they developed the advisory program for the year. And also, there was work done to organize an action planning committee that staff will be a part of throughout the school year that was also connected to that social emotional learning and how they might use that within their courses. For engagement, we had our Kinder Camp, and that really works to prepare families and students for that transition to kindergarten at both Northeast and Northwest. And classroom strategies and materials to support Rutland High School students and teachers, that was another project that was done related to student engagement. And professional development, again, it's not an exhaustive list because we have lots of individuals engaged in their own professional development. We ran an artificial intelligence course that was taught by one of our teachers through Castleton. Patricia Agner ran a Canva education course.
What, excuse me, what is Canva?
Canva is, it's like a platform. It's similar, oh, is Patricia here? Oh, Patricia, you want to talk about Canva?
Oh, so Canva is an amazing educational tool that's free to teachers. And so it makes their content more engaging. And so teachers are very excited to learn how to use it. And it has a lot of resources for every grade level and content area. So if teachers want to go find content, they can do that, too. So it's a very powerful tool for K-12.
Sounds very interesting.
Yeah. And then we had some trauma-informed and SEL practices, a course that was run by, again, one of our teachers who was instructing their colleagues. Best Practices in Literacy Instruction, which was led by another one of our staff members to provide professional development in-house to our teachers and some other, they brought in some other professional development resources worked into that. Our illustrative mathematics program, we are in year two of implementation, so we ensured that all of our new teachers were on board over the summer with what that would entail so they were ready to go. In June, we sent a team of administrators and teachers to the Innovative Schools Summit. And like I said, lots of individual leadership and various teaching professional development opportunities. And that's not all, because I know that our teachers are working constantly to help prepare for the school year, so just wanted to add that. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bianca.
So on to the committee reports, Sarah?
Okay, let's see. The building committee met on September 3rd. Most committee members present, Stephanie Stooly was not present, and we had other board members and various administrations also there. I'm not going to go through all of it because Bill and Bianca went through the Essar stuff, and that's a lot of what Glenn presented to us at the meeting. But he also presented a small video of Alumni Field. Alumni Field is finished now. They've finished resurfacing it, and everybody should go check it out because it's gorgeous. And if you want to see the video, ask Glenn because he made a little video of the whole process of it. It was really cool to watch, so. That was not Essar-funded, that was locally funded, and we're really excited that we were able to do that this year. And we thank the public for approving our budget so that we could give our kids a really nice turf to play on this year. So Mr. Scott went over all of the Essar stuff, which you just were able to see, and it was pretty impressive to see all that. And I also want to echo what Karen said very well about all the hard work that went into the Essar. The middle school, we had a PCB update. And if anybody's watching the news, this is big in the news right now because several schools had to do some outside classrooms because their PCB numbers came back problematic. Ours came back awesome. The highest levels detected were below the minimum action level. And a letter went out to all the parents. The only other school tested was Northeast, and it had zero PCBs detected there. The testing schedule has stalled out because they're not sure about the future of that whole program. But the schools with the highest concerns were targeted and tested first, RMS and Northeast. And they're clear, so we are not worried about that anymore, thank goodness. And we discussed radon testing, which we will talk more about next meeting. The RIMS and RHS Stormwater Projects, which we were talking about possibly doing this year, the contracts didn't go in in time, and so those projects are not going to be undertaken this year. They're going to happen next year. Rutland City Public Schools is responsible for 10% of that expense, so we, there was discussion around what that looks like and what we have to do in that area. And Glenn's going to keep us updated on the progress there. Another item that was talked about was building temperatures because this was something that was brought up at the end of the school year last year. And it's something any of us who had kids in the middle school or intermediate school are very well aware of. So Glenn was talking about how he's been working on reviewing the building temperatures. He had a problem with the past data, but he is currently working on gathering data and monitoring the buildings and figuring out ways to keep the buildings cooler. Window springs were replaced, so a lot of those really old windows that were very difficult to open are now much easier to open, so we're going to have more airflow. And they're going to continue to monitor the temperatures and find new ways to keep the buildings cooler, to keep our kids cooler. No other topics were raised, and we can, we, wow, can't read. Ended the meeting at 6:05, and our next meeting is October 1st at 5 o'clock.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions? So Mary Beth?
Great, thank you. We met the same evening to have the finance and strategic planning meeting, and we covered two main topics. One was Tim Smith covered, and it was the update on the progress of the fiscal year 2024 audit, as well as the implementation of the new accounting system, which is called School ERP Pro. The other topic was basically what Ted talked about tonight, which was the plans and timeline for our fiscal year '26 budget. And so we'll talk mainly tonight, I'll give the update on the audit and the systems update. With regard to the audit, Tim discussed the overall timeline, the schedule for onsite fieldwork, and he gave us two important goals, which was to certainly earn a clean opinion. That's what we're looking to have with no material or significant findings. And that we're looking to complete the audit by February 28th of 2025, which would actually be an entire month prior to the due date for that. The Federal Audit Clearing House has a March 31st due date, and we're looking to complete it on February 28th of 2025. So Tim advised that the year-end financial close for fiscal year 2024 was completed on August 31st, which was the earliest financial closing that we've had in recent memory, and was many months ahead of the closing of the books from the past several years. Good job. Nice job. This year, year-end closeout obviously included a successful reconciliation of the Essar funds. I think you mean reconciliation, and we got the money that we asked for back, right? Okay, good. That reimbursement that we were talking about, so, where was it? Grant spending for fiscal year '24, right. And the plans to wind up the remaining Essar projects, as we've already talked about, are consistent with the deadlines that we do need to meet in order to be reimbursed for that money. The district's timely and successful year-end close now enables this early start to the audit, which certainly will help us meet that early, that month early deadline. Tim also updated the committee on the progress of implementing the new accounting system. The implementation and the use of all major system functions are going well. Anybody who's been through a major software change or a major system change in an organization knows what a huge undertaking this has been. And so to have a systems functioning, system functions are going well rapport is really huge for that office and obviously all of the end users that use that information as well and use the system. These results include four successful payroll runs. There's nothing more important than a payroll run, as we all know. Since July 1, when we implemented the new system and we entered into our new fiscal year, they were completed, those four runs were completed with only relatively minor issues to resolve. Purchasing and payables operations are also going smoothly. We are already seeing benefits of this automation and some streamline of processes. I know that Tim mentioned a significant amount of less paper and much more electronic passing of approvals and documents and such, which I'm sure saves a ton of time, as we talked about, so time and paper as well. So Tim expressed, excuse me, Tim expressed his appreciation for the many extra efforts invested since January by the entire business office team to make this implementation a success. And of course, on behalf of, I'm assuming, on the entire board, I'd certainly like to echo that sentiment and give a huge shout-out and kudos and hooray to Ted and the entire team of folks there. So well done on that, yes. And like I said, our second topic was really about budget planning and timeline, which was covered in full earlier tonight with Ted's report. And our next meeting is also on October 1st at, but at 6:00 PM instead of 5:00 PM. Okay, that's it. Thanks, Ted. Any questions?
Thank you, Mary Beth.
So unfinished business, we're going to start with Greg and phone procedures.
So if I could give an intro to Greg, this is Greg Schullger, by the way. Nice to meet you, nice to meet you. So Karen, you asked a good question the other day about cellphone, cellphone policies, how they work. And, you know, what we wanted to provide to you, I think we gave you the list of expectations for RHS, Stafford, RMS, and RIS. We wanted to provide you just kind of an overview of how this works, and I think Greg will speak a little bit, but if we need anybody else to speak, we can do that. I wanted to just say, you know, when we're, you give us the authority to do this work, to set these expectations through the policies that you build. So I put a couple of the policies that I think were relevant to this question into this board packet that you received. You know, your policy A240 says, our main goal is instruction. That's what a school district is supposed to be doing, we're trying to instruct. And then 7410 talks about, we want to make sure that we have a safe, orderly, civil, and positive learning environment for our students. Plus, we want our students to understand with clarity what their expectations are for how they behave in the building. And A241 talks about the use of technology tools in instruction. We want to make sure that, technology's not just a topic in and of itself, it's also a tool. And we want to be able to make sure kids learn how to use tools well, learn how to use technology tools well. So that's the umbrella that you provided us as a board. Those are the policies. And then we take that and we say, okay, how are we going to, you know, send attendance procedures, or how are we going to make sure there's a dress code, or how are we going to say, in this case, we use cellphones in schools? And this is not a new topic, it's been going on for years, ever since there have been cellphones. But we adjust and we shift, and society shifts and adjusts. And so what's happening now nationally, I think, is a lot of schools are moving away from more open use of cellphones in schools because they've become a distraction. They're difficult to, it's difficult to teach in a classroom when kids are on their phones. And so they've shifted away from that a little bit and taken different types of practices and expectations for kids. But Greg is going to talk about how the high school got there, shifting their expectations a little bit.
Great, thank you for the introduction. And we're going to start with an activity. Lots of talking, so we're going to start with an activity. You need a pen and just a place to write. So please don't begin until I say go, but here is your activity. What I would ask you to do, some of you have heard the expression, "The season of the sticks." It's a line from a song, it's about Vermont. So the first thing that you're going to do, and I've got a timer, the first thing that you're going to do is just write across in a straight line, you're just going to write the words, "The season of the sticks." Don't do it yet. And then directly below that, for each letter, write one number. So capital T, write the number one. H, write the number two. All right? So you write "The season of the sticks," and then you write the numbers, the digits, that correspond to each of the letters in a line directly underneath the line that says "The season of the sticks." And as soon as you're done, please look up at the timer, and please note how long it took you. Everybody ready?
Corresponds to each of the letters, meaning A is 1, B is 2, or like?
Oh, no, like, so the first letter that you wrote, wow, yeah.
Oh my gosh, are you kidding me? We gotta get out of here.
They just need about 20 minutes on it.
No, so like, you're going to write "the," and your, the T is the number 1, H is the number 2, E is the number 3.
It's bases.
Skip them.
Okay.
All right? Good questions, very smart questions. All right, everybody ready? Again, when you're done, look up, on your marks, get set, go. Feel free to play along at home. Again, when you're done, just write down the time for you.
I don't know.
All right. Everybody else up?
Do you have to be able to read what we wrote?
This is totally for you. Okay, so that was your first activity. It's not a race, it's not a contest. So here's the next activity. This time, directly underneath or on a different piece of paper, it doesn't really matter, you're going to write, again, you're going to write "The season of the sticks," and you're going to write the numbers, hopefully you got the right, there's 20 letters. You're going to write those numbers, but this time, you're going to write T for "the" and the number 1, and then the H and the number 2, and the E and the number 3. So instead of going straight across this way, you're going to go T, 1, H, 2, E, and then you're going to continue.
Reading the season of the sticks down?
Letter, number, no, letter, number. Yeah, 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 we're just doing it again, so you write the T, and then you go down, and you write the 1, and then you write the...
Oh, you're doing it one letter at a time.
Exactly.
One letter, one number, one letter, one number, one letter, one number. Okay? Everybody understand? And again, same thing, as soon as you're done, just look up and mark down the time that it took you to write it. Okay? On your marks, get set, go.
This will teach me to ask the question.
This is called negative.
Yes, negative reinforcement.
We were all suffering because of her.
That's right. All I had was one comment and apologies.
All right, so, I'm not going to ask, but generally speaking, guess which one takes longer?
The second.
The second one. Here's why. Your brain is wired to function with one part of the brain using letters and a different part of the brain using numbers. So this first activity is an example of, when I'm focused and I'm writing "The season of the sticks," and then I stop that activity, and then I switch to a set of numbers, I, my brain, the code switches over to another part, and then you write a set of numbers, and that activates that part of the brain. The second activity is when your brain is switching between an activity, like letters, and then to a number, and then back to the letters, and then back to the number, and then back to the letters, and back to the number. It is analogous to being in a class, paying attention to what the teacher is saying, and then my phone goes off, and then I'm back to paying attention to what the teacher said, and then my phone goes off, and then I'm back, and then I get a text, and then I... So, the reality is, is that over the course of many people, the second one takes a lot longer. Our brains just take time to switch between those different activities. And these parts of the brain are actually really close to each other. These are relatively simple tasks, right? Learning about the, the causes of the American Revolution and Instagram are two very complex activities, right, at the same time. So, the distractibility factor. A recent study was completed by UC, University of California, I believe it was Irvine, on a complex task that you're really focused on. Take a guess at how long, when you're interrupted, take a guess at how long it takes for you to return to the same level of focus on that complex task.
15.
Any guesses?
7 minutes.
7?
15.
15?
3 minutes.
3?
Yeah.
23 minutes.
Oh my gosh.
23 minutes. So when you're really focused on an activity and you get interrupted, or that activity, and then to return to that activity takes 23 minutes. Now if you start to think about the average, a high school class, there's only three of those in a class. So you can only, there's the start of class, so there's a session, and then an interruption, there's a second one. All it takes is two interruptions, and that's the end of the class. So, issues of distractibility, these were things that really brought us about in December of '23, as educators and as faculty, to begin to talk about this conversation, issues of distractibility. As you may have noticed, if you open up the newspaper, the New York Times, there's been a great deal of national and local press devoted to this topic of late. We're seeing schools, there's a growing consensus, and especially classroom teachers, because there's also some solid research now that are highlighting the negative effects of excessive phone use and the need to ensure that students are using technology constructively. And this does not even begin to address the issues of mental health that are, that are coming to light.
Or the hump you get in the back of your neck.
I know, right? That's right.
I mean, seriously.
Don't get me started on the posture, that's right.
The physical aspect of it.
My daughter yelling at me. Get off your phone, mom.
Get off your phone, mom, that's right, that's right. So we started with some questions, and what I did was I just, I said, "Let's have a meeting, voluntary, to talk about this. What role do cellphones and electronic devices play in your classroom? How do you use them? How are students using them? What is your estimate as a teacher of the percentage of their use that is productive or non-productive?" We began with these discussions, and we reviewed current procedures and discussed what about them were working and what about those procedures were not. Through those discussions, we arrived at a consensus that each of us working separately was really not being very effective. Different teachers administer, we each, this was something that was in that category of, you run your classroom your particular way, which many things are, and most of education resides at that level. But we really came to a consensus as a school that this was really not working when we were sort of addressing it separately. And we really decided that we needed to come to a common approach. Around the same time last year, I began incorporating 10-minute activities into faculty meetings, including the one that we just did. And the, we used this report, which was prepared, so many of you are familiar with the Rowland Foundation. The Rowland Foundation gave a grant to four Vermont teachers. They produced this report, which provides both some solid, some interesting and collecting the research, as well as some activities. And really what they came to was applying filters. Filters that were asking students and asking adults, is their use of this particular device, is it constructive? Is it mindful? Is it kind? And is it healthy? And asking students to be thinking about those four filters. What developed as we worked on this was an approach to this work, that we really viewed this as an educational endeavor, rather than strictly punitive. We wanted to develop a procedure that constructively educated students on the healthy use of electronic devices. And that is why, when we talk about this topic, we talk about digital wellness, which corresponds nicely with our traits from Portrait of a Graduate. Over the course of the second semester, we drafted, revised, I published, rewrote, sought input on procedures, that is, the final of which is included in your packet, it was adopted in June. We had multiple discussions about language, we discussed the commensurability of the consequences and the behaviors, and an important part of this work was to review and learn from the procedures that are being used elsewhere. We took a look at Rutland Middle School, Stafford Technical Center, as well as schools outside of Rutland County, to sort of take, what did we want to learn from these? Where we landed as a policy, as, excuse me, as a procedure, where we landed frankly, is really not that different than the procedures that we had on the books previously. The real effort has been to work collectively with faculty to reach a consensus that we would all work together on this. That we would follow the same procedures, abide by the same expectations, and in doing so reinforce one another's efforts. Over the summer, I communicated with families to make them aware of our expectations. Anecdotally, the responses to the communication were overwhelmingly positive. The responses that I got back to the, the emails that I sent were overwhelmingly positive. When students returned, we held class assemblies and reviewed the expectations within the context of the Portrait of a Graduate traits of wellness and communication. It is very early going for Rowland High School. Again, anecdotally, first impressions, I think, are positive. In a minute, I'm going to ask the students their opinion on what they think about. Teachers are reporting that students are engaging with one, with one another much more in conversations, far more frequently than they have been in the past, and that there have been significantly fewer interruptions due to phone use. So with that, before I open it up to the board, I was hoping that the students could comment on their experiences.
I won't say that much, but I think definitely what Mr. Farnham said about how it was made very well known to the students and the staff at the beginning of the year, and so everyone was on the same page, and all of the teachers were reinforcing the same thing, and I think it's having the desire of it.
Besides some exceptions, I think should be considered further in the air, I think that it's definitely helped, like, I know, and not in most of my classes, like, now that I'm taking, I've seen like phone use being a problem, but I know previously, teachers were having a hard time teaching, and like, they'd have to interrupt their lessons, just to be like, "Get off your phone," like, and some students would be like, "I'm confused what we're doing," while they're sitting on their phone, which I'm like, "Why are you on your phone now?" But I think I've also heard frustration from teachers where they're like, "I'm trying to do my, my job, and kids are just like not listening." And I think that's frustrating for me, like, as someone who does their work, I think it's difficult to hear that conversation over and over and over again. So, I think the phone policy is definitely needed at our school, and it's definitely helped a lot.
I'm curious what the exceptions are.
Um, I just like, like, I'm in an art class, and I think when I'm drawing, I, I find it better for me to like put in music when other kids are talking. It's hard for me to concentrate on my work, and just like, instead of like engaging in that conversation, if I don't have music in, I also think in study halls, like, when I don't have work, what do you specifically want me to do if I don't have work? Which I can read, but some students don't like reading. And, yeah, mostly just that, and also when there's no, like, when we're done with class, like a few minutes early, I think that time could be used or on the phone if there's no assignment.
Those are great points, thank you for sharing. Karen?
I just had a comment and a question. The difference I saw with the high school policy versus the middle school policy, I liked the middle school policy because it gave the teacher the authority to give permission, and I think the high school policy does not. And I know that there are certain examples or circumstances where it would be helpful for the teacher to be able to allow it for limited periods of time. And I think, you know, I understand what you said about, and I know that was a, a problem before, where a teacher would allow cellphone usage, and then a sub would come in and say, "No, you can't," and it would become a huge problem. But I do think that the teachers need to have the authority to be able to use or allow the use of cellphones when appropriate.
Can I just go off of that, too? In addition to what Amaya said, I thought those are excellent suggestions. I know a handful of children who struggle focusing and need that quiet, or need that zone out, or need that music, or audiobooks also comes to mind really quickly, because I know in the middle school, my son was encouraged to utilize audiobooks instead of actually reading them, because now we live in a time when that's okay, and, you know, at least you're taking in what's happening from that. So that would be another one of those exceptions, where earbuds would be important and access to that would be important. So I just feel like there are gray areas that should be considered, where a blanket policy, I don't know, I don't feel good about it, and...
So I just want to point out that our role on the board is not to get involved with any of these types of procedures, these are considered procedural. The most we could ever do is to have a policy that said, "Each building has to have a phone policy." It's not in our lane to even weigh in on the procedures. Karen?
Well, I would say that I feel for myself, that this is something that is within the purview of the board. I understand what you're saying, and, you know, we do make policies, and I just think this was a huge change from what, and I'm not saying I don't support, you know, a ban on cellphones, I just think it needs to be reasonable. We've had all of this time period and where kids have been allowed to do this, and then to suddenly change it was concerning to me. I, I have no problem with, you know, prohibiting it, but I'm also concerned about how much teacher time is being devoted to enforcing this, and what, you know, what's our responsibility if we lose $1,000 cellphone because a teacher takes it away and it gets lost or stolen? And I understand, you know, there's that blanket thing, we're not responsible for lost or stolen property, but it could become a big problem. So I, I'm just wanting to know what's going on, and I feel it's our obligation to know what's going on in our schools.
Agreed.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, my other question was, how do you see it going? I mean, are you getting a lot of pushback from the kids? Are a lot of compliance? I mean...
Frankly, the class assemblies, it was a collective shrug.
Right. What can we do?
So they don't care.
Well, it was sort of like, you know, I think it was important to communicate, you know, I think in fairness, you've got to say to everybody, "Hey, these are the expectations." The, the sense from the students in, and again, it, I, I want to start with the disclaimer of how early in the year it is. But with that being said, with each assembly, we met with each class, and I went through the expectations, and there was sort of a, okay, so this is how we're doing this, then. I, you know, from the teacher perspective, the feedback that I'm hearing is, "Thank you for the additional time that they now have," as opposed to less time, because separately, there were all different methods happening in each and every classroom. So, the conversations among the faculty, really the, the strength of the, the statement about how we all need to be doing the same thing, that wasn't coming from me. It was a sense of, "I need to know that the A-block teachers are supporting me when I'm in my B-block, and I'm going to hand them off to C-block." So, in the, in the document that you have, you can see at the end of that, there's a shortened version, that handbook and syllabus language. So that language was copied and pasted into every course syllabus, because faculty felt really strongly, and they were sort of looking left and right and at each other of, "Listen, folks," you know, I think it was Ben Franklin who said, you know, "We are going to hang together, or we are going to hang together." So, they really felt like, "We need to hang together on this, we need to be saying exactly the same thing."
Well, and I like that there are times that the kids can use them, I mean, so it's not a flat-out ban, and we're going to take them all the time, but...
Agreed.
Charlotte?
I'm sorry, Charlotte.
I just wanted to say, I, I actually appreciate, I feel like, what you've done, everything you've said tonight. My, what I'm taking away from it and what I'm hearing is that there's a lot of thought, a lot of stuff that went on, you, you just went through the last 20 minutes. a lot of stuff that went on, you, you just went through the last twenty minutes, or whatever it was, telling me about the meetings and the discussion, and they're putting together, and then bringing it back out for more input, and then sending this all out to give structure around something that I think that teachers have been struggling with for quite some time. And I, I thank you for handling that and dealing with that, and now they have something they can hang their hat on and go with, and we'll see how this, and I, I think it's great that they can now kind of take that back, take that power back a little bit, and, and get to the students in a better way, and show them a different way, and maybe, I, I just think it's a good thing. So, I, I thank you for kind of tackling that.
Thank you.
Marisa?
I wanna add on to what Charlene was saying, because as an educator, I don't have to deal with it with my fifth graders, but I understand that when behaviors get in the way of your teaching, whether it's about a cellphone or about something else, it's really distracting for the teacher, distracting for the classmates, distracting for the student who has a cellphone or something like that. So, I think it's really, really essential for all involved that this is here now. So, thank you for putting in the time to do it. I love, in your description, you said that using electronic devices is a learned skill. And I think that's absolutely true. It's our job as educators, as community member, not as community member, as educators, I'll say, to set boundaries and make those safe boundaries to benefit their learning. And that's what this is doing, it's benefiting their learning. So, I really appreciate your clear communication, expectations, and the consequences. Those are super clear, and I think that ultimately makes teachers and students feel safe, because they know what to expect. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan?
And also, also piggybacking on, on the, on two of you as well, is that building the consistency is, is really awesome, too, that this is the expectation, and therefore, it, no matter who you are, you know, this is, this is what's gonna happen. This is where it is, and this is how we use it. Which is a, a very important thing to have, is the consistency every day.
Thank you.
So, Sarah?
Just coming from a parent who had a child, this was one of his biggest, biggest problems, was his cellphone. But he's also a, a very strict rule follower. When he knows the rule, and the rule is clear, he will follow that rule to the letter of the law, and he will find a way around the rest of it. But, that's, if this rule had been in place, a lot of our arguments wouldn't have existed, because he was like, "I have this sub that lets me have a phone, and this teacher doesn't let me have a phone, and this teacher, like, sometimes makes me take," you know, and so, I was, my, you know, in my adult brain, I'm like, "Just get rid of your phone." But, you know, in his brain, it's like, "There's no rule that says I have to get rid of my phone in every class, so, you know, I'm frustrated." So, for, as a parent, I see that, and I'm like, "Oh, that's gonna make it so much easier for parents who have kids who need to know what the rule is." And also, I was looking at the, when I heard what Amaya said, I was looking at the Stafford rules, and in the Stafford rules, they have a thing that says something about, sometimes students might be able to, when they're doing an art project or something, might be able to listen to, with very specific rules, listen to music, and as a student myself, that's how I learn. So, it's just nice to see the variations in the, it's still a consistent thing, but there's also thought that went into it, like somebody said, all the thought that went into it. So, that's, it's awesome, I think it's awesome, and I think you guys have done a lot of work on this, and I really appreciate it, so...
I'm gonna copy and put it in my work. I'm gonna use it at Castleton.
I do appreciate all of, I mean, you're obviously putting a lot of thought into different places. I just wanna go back to what our student representative said, Amaya, and thinking about, I had a conversation last week with a parent whose concern was consistency throughout the schools, and her, it wasn't cellphone situation, it was go-for-a-walk situation. So, you know, middle school, this is a child that struggles focusing, and the direction was go-for-a-walk, go-for-a-walk. Move on to ninth grade, go-for-a-walk, go-for-a-walk. He's marked tardy every day, and he's marked absent, intruant, and this is a serious concern for this parent, because it wasn't a consistent situation. So, these are things we need to think about for students who need to quiet the noise around them, who maybe can listen to the earbuds while reading, or whatever, now in the high school won't be able to. You know, is there, what is the situation for these students? You know, we, because now, we now live in a time of fidgets, and, you know, things that different bodies need to focus, or to get their work done, or to do art, or to do, you know, free time. So, what will happen for these students? Because now the high school has this blanket, no one gets any phone, no one gets any earbuds. So, that's my concern, is for these students that maybe could've listened to the earbuds in the middle school, go to high school, and now the answer is, "Too bad." So, I'm not saying, you know, yes or no, or whatever, but this is something we need to be concerned for, for everyone, because, you know, it's all about, we have to focus on the equity for everyone's body is different. Amaya wanted to weigh in.
I did just wanna say, he was very open with me, like, and like, once we get adjusted, because this is, like you said, a very new policy, once we get adjusted to listen to those conversations, and like, maybe adjusting the rule to like, "Okay, here's some, here's some exceptions," and like, maybe this teacher allows that, just for like, music and that type of thing, so, I just wanna say that.
Yeah, and, you know, there's, for all of the students, so, just having to consider that, that everyone learns differently, and so, we have to keep that in mind. And that's a concern for me, hearing that this is a concern for other parents.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Grant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for teaching me to put my phone down.
Teaching me to put my phone down.
And I was gonna say, maybe we should've started with the parents.
Oh. Not my department.
Okay, everyone phones down. Phones down. We have one last topic. And that's the VSBA contract for the superintendent search. And we had the opportunity to ask Sandra Cameron questions last week. So, you know, barring any further discussion, shall we move on to a vote? Any further discussion? Okay. Karen?
Well, I was gonna move to authorize the chair to sign the contract for the superintendent search.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Wonderful, thank you. Any new business?
I just have one quick thing, a really important topic regarding a dodgeball game that's taking place, uh, the Friday, next Friday. I've heard from most of you. Karen, are you joining us for the...
I would not.
Karen, I kinda had this a no in my head, but I just wanted to make sure, I wanna, you know, alright.
You could be a cheerleader. Yeah, you could be a cheerleader.
Look at, Kathy's gonna come but not play. If you wanna come, please come. Okay, you don't have to play, okay?
We can just hang out.
You don't have to play.
I would play.
So, no, no, I, I feel that, okay. Marisa's a no, Heather's a no, Justine's a no. Uh, I have myself, Sarah, Ryan, are you good?
I'm good.
Ryan's a good.
Yes.
Stephanie's a yes. Kathy's going but not playing. Charlene, are you, you're probably working, 'cause you're an adult. I have a really flexible day.
Because I'm no. I have a really flexible day, so I can go. What time is it?
Uh, one, one seventeen or something. It's like, 1:00 PM on Friday, the twenty, twentieth.
God. It's gonna be fun.
It'll be fun.
I mean...
It's gonna be fun.
Your name on the building? Okay, okay, I'll, I'll put you as a maybe, but, okay, alright, okay. Mike Norman's gonna be wondering tomorrow night, okay? Um, and then, on the twentieth, right? So, that just leaves Courtney, I don't know. I can text Courtney later, that's fine, okay? I don't know if she's...
She said her, her mic isn't working.
Okay, alright, I can text Courtney later.
She's a definite maybe.
She's a definite maybe.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.